A button on them somewhere? Okay, I see where it is on these, okay. I'll try it. Uh huh. Bye. We...
Like fun?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll go ahead and bring this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. First order of business is the roll call.
Chair Wilson.
Here.
Vice Chair Kerth.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Porter.
Here.
And Commissioner Dew.
Present.
Thank you.
Alright, our first order of business will be, or I guess our second order of business will be doing the invocation and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Kerth. Please stand.
And then bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to assist our leaders in building a better community and providing opportunities for families for better lives. Lead us in truth and teach us by your wisdom. Amen.
Alright, our next order of business is the approval of minutes from our July 8th, 2015 meeting.
Some of...
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Dew to approve those minutes, a second by Commissioner Porter. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain, I was not here.
Thank you. So those minutes have been approved with Vice Chair Kerth abstaining from the vote. Thank you.
And we'll move to Agenda Item Number One.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Item Number One is PLN 15-14. It is a request to revoke the minor conditional use permit for the Internet Cafe located at 15329 Palmdale Road, Suite L. This case actually has two sections to it. One is the minor conditional use permit, the revocation of that. And then the second part is the, is an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision to revoke the business license. So we have the appellants, the owners of the business, here for you tonight, opposing the appeal and the revocation of the CUP. The Internet Cafe was approved by staff in 2013 with a condition on it that gambling is prohibited. It was kind of a weird time because the sweepstakes aspect of Internet Cafes was just starting to become popular. And it was a, there was a lot of questions on whether it was gambling or not. And there wasn't very many court cases established on it. The, the idea that the Internet Cafe was going to be used by people going in to use a computer was not what was happening. They were going in and redeeming, redeeming, buying a calling card, a phone card, and redeeming sweepstakes points off of it in order to play casino-type games on the computers. So that's what the main type of the business was. And then finally, the court cases, court case came back that it is in California. California deemed it to be gambling and therefore this business is not legally operating. Now, the business isn't there currently. It closed down several months ago and there is another business in this suite. However, staff would like to remove the conditional use permit from it because that runs with the land. And that way, no other business can move in and do the same thing as an Internet Cafe. We did, again, like I said, revoke the business license through the zoning administrator hearing and they are here to appeal that to you tonight as well. So if you have any questions, staff supports the revocation.
Isn't the business license based upon the location also?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. They would need to get a new business license to operate somewhere else in the city.
And this CUP is directly related just to that suite, correct?
Correct. They can move out and somebody else can move in and use that CUP. That's, when I say it runs with the land, that's what I mean. When you, when you approve a conditional use permit, unless there's a specific condition that says it only applies to them or some other type of condition that says it's only valid for a certain period of time, a conditional use permit runs with the land for that use, not the owner, not the person who gets it approved.
Okay. Alright. Any additional question? I will go ahead and open up the public comment in regards to item number one. If you'd please fill out a little white card, if you don't have one with you, if you could please fill one out when you're done and hand it to the clerk, just so we have all your pertinent information, I would appreciate it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Monica Romallo and I am the attorney for Cybercall 888, the appellants in this matter. Thank you for taking the time to hear this appeal and our arguments on this issue. Just to give a little bit of a further background on this business. Prior to January 1st, 2015, Cybercall did operate a business that sold phone cards. And it promoted those phone call, phone cards through a sweepstakes in which you'd buy a phone card and along with phone card you'd get sweepstakes entry points that you could use to, one of every, of three ways actually. One, you could just, you could just ignore the sweepstakes points and use your phone card. The second is you could go to the clerk and ask them what your winnings were on the sweepstakes points. Or third, you could play entertainment games in the business and through those games have your winnings revealed to you. But the, the winnings were all predetermined based on a finite pool of prizes that was created before anyone ever played the game. It was, it was very much like any of the Monopoly sweepstakes, the Coca-Cola My Rewards sweepstakes, tons of other sweepstakes that are used by, I think, most businesses that sell food or consumer products. At that time, the law in California regarding whether or not these sweepstakes were legal was, one, that sweepstakes in California are generally legal as long as there is a free, a free method of entry. And in which case, we did have a free method of entry. And two, the issue of whether or not you could have the sweepstakes results revealed to you through a computer. The law on that issue stated that as long as the, the computer itself or the machine itself didn't incorporate an element of chance into the machine, that it wasn't necessarily a slot machine. So that, you know, our position was that those, that these sweepstakes were legal and the method of revealing the sweepstakes through these computer entertainment games was legal. And that was based on a case called Trinkle II. And these businesses were modeled after that. After that, the, the elements of a slot machine and what is legal and what is illegal sweeps, sweepstakes under that law. In January 2015, the California Legislature passed, enacted a law, or it actually came into effect in January, putting a limit on those sweepstakes games. It's saying that while we recognize these games, sweepstakes are legal, we are prohibiting them unless they're being used for seasonal promotional sweepstakes. Much like McDonald's Monopoly is, you know, runs for a certain period of time, I think it's two or three months. So, beginning in January 1st, and again, I want to emphasize that the entire time we've been fully transparent with what we are doing in these businesses. I believe the owners, my clients' husbands, they're now the widows of, of the former owners that are continuing with the business, met with your, with city representatives to explain the business completely transparent and why we thought it was legal under the law. And along those lines, in January, we switched to a single seasonal promotional sweepstakes. It ran from January to March, January 1st to March 31st. And once that was, that sweepstakes was over, it was over. And we went in, we switched our business model and started offering customers games of skill, which I'll get to in a, in a second. So, and so beginning January 1st, we complied with the new law, limiting, limiting the amount of time that you can have these kinds of promotional sweepstakes. With the idea that possibly in the following year, we could run it again as another seasonal promotional sweepstakes. However, in June of 2015, of this year, just a few weeks ago, the California Supreme Court declared that these kinds of, these kinds of sweepstakes games were illegal. And we've, we've stated in all our papers that once the Supreme Court decided the issue. And it shows how convoluted of an issue it was, given that it had to go all the way to the California Supreme Court to be decided. Once we received that ruling, we, we decided, and we were very upfront with the city, that we are not, we, we had no intention of renewing these seasonal promotional sweepstakes. What we have been, what we had been doing was after April 1st, 2015, is offering clients or customers games of skill. And the California Legislature specifically carves out an exception for gaming when a game of, when the game is, the ability to win a prize is governed predominantly by, by skill or, or, by skill. Specifically, California Penal Code, Section 330.330.5, specifically exempts games of skill from the definition of illegal slot machines stating that pinball and other amusement machines or devices, which are predominantly games of skill, are not included within the meaning of a slot machine. So, what we offer, or what we were offering after April 1st were these games of skill. And they were much like the kinds of games that one would find at Chuck E. Cheese. I don't think you have them here, but the Dave and Buster's, a family fun center, many carnival games. You know, I'll include these, these games of skill. When I went with, I met with Mr. Borscher previously, I told him that I would, I could bring in a sample of how the game is played. If it's possible, I can, I have a video now that, that explains exactly how they work. If you don't mind me presenting it.
On what media?
I have a computer. So I might, I might have to show it to you a few times so that you'll be able to see it.
Okay, maybe, maybe you could explain how, how this applies to this location where we're, where you're arguing for.
Okay. The way that it, the reason it applies is I think because I think that you are revoking the license and the conditional use permit based on activities that were not occurring at the time of the revocation. So I, our position is that at all times, we've been complying with the laws. When we were operating in 2015, we were, our, our business model was, was modeled after the definition of a slot machine is defined by the, the law at that time. Specifically, the case is Trinkle II and it's in my papers. I won't go into, I won't bore you with the citation, but it's in the papers. Once the law changed in 2015, we again continued to comply with the statute in that we limited the, the sweepstakes to a, it was a seasonal promotional sweepstakes that went on for a limited time. Now that, and then once that ended, we moved to the games of skill, which were legal. And then once Grule came down, we expressed that we have no intention of continuing with the, with the sweepstakes games. However, at the time, that, that the, at the last time that the business was operating, it wasn't operating the sweepstakes. It wasn't engaging in any illegal activity that would be grounds for revoking the license or the conditional use permit.
I guess the question is, you've left that suite, you don't plan to move back into that suite. You don't plan to operate an Internet Cafe. You, you plan to offer games of skill next. So I'm, I guess the question is, they're here to see why, why they shouldn't revoke a conditional use permit that's in that location only, for that location only, in a business license that's for that location. If you are saying that you want to apply for another business license in the city, we will take a look at that business license separately, but not before the planning. The Planning Commission doesn't even need to hear that. We can do that staff-wise and, and move forward on another location or another business license. They're only here to, to hear why they shouldn't revoke the permit tonight.
Well, I think if, I mean, if your position is that we're no longer there, then why would we be, and why, why would we be having to go through the process of revocation? I mean, if they're, if we're, if you see the need to revoke the, the, the license, the permit and the license, then I think we have, we have standing to object to that.
Sure, absolutely. And the, and I explained the reason why we want to remove the conditioning use permit, whether it's you or somebody else going in there. We don't want somebody else going in there. But we're calling it an Internet Cafe and you think you're kind of headed where we talked about, maybe an arcade or it might be something different than even an Internet Cafe. But I don't...
Yeah, my, my question, I, I understand where you're coming from, I understand what you're saying. What we're, I guess what we're looking at is in relation to that particular suite with the CUP that goes with that particular suite, irregardless of their position, they're not there at the moment, or they're not there anymore. But we're looking at revoking the CUP for that particular suite so that another Internet Cafe or similar type business would not be able to go back into that suite. Is that correct? I mean, that's how I'm understanding it. So I'm not, I don't believe we're actually going anything against them per se. It's more so the CUP relating to that particular suite and making sure that it doesn't, something else doesn't go back in there.
There, and there is, there, there could be some argument to be made that when we approve the next business license, it happens to be a medical marijuana evaluation clinic. And there, when we approve that, that that got rid of the CUP, that somebody else would have to come in for a CUP. However, we wanted to take the extra step of revoking it just to make sure that that, in case that couldn't be an argument. So, if, if you'd like her to continue, we can, or I can provide staff's responses, but, but why don't, why don't you go ahead and, and finish up, I guess?
Okay, I'm, just to respond a little bit further to that. It leaves my clients in the position of, we would like to have the issue addressed because it leaves my clients in the position where if they want to open another store, they have to enter into a lease to get a business license and to seek, and then seek a conditional use permit for that specific store. If it, we're going to be in a situation where the conditional use permit is going to be denied, then my clients will have gone through the, all those expenses just to have a conditional use permit and a business license denied on grounds that I think could be addressed here.
I don't believe that would...
And I should say that we are open to seeing their product, seeing the next iteration of the gaming. And we've talked to the Sheriff's Department, they would like to see it as well. And we even contacted the Department of Justice Gambling Control Board and they would like to be involved in that as well. So we can certainly set up a time where we can meet and go over the next proposal and then determine whether it's legal or not. And, and once it's determined that it's legal, then yeah, you wouldn't even come back before the Planning Commission. It would be approved by staff for the business license. Or, or maybe a minor conditional use permit, depending on what we're calling the use.
Okay, can I have one second to confer with my clients? Another issue that we have is that if the li, the business license is revoked when my clients reapply for a business license, it's going to be in their history that a business license was revoked from them. That is why we, we do have a little bit of an issue of having the license be revoked. It clouds, I think, their name.
I, I, that would be something that the Planning Commission could do in their motion of the action that you take tonight would be not to, to not, what's the wording? Not to put that stigma or that, there's a word for it. I can't think of it right now. Not, yeah, there you go, not prejudice the decision, not prejudice any future applications by the applicant.
Okay, would we be able to make clear that the, as far as the, that we, the conditional, the conditional use permit and the license is to be revoked on the record saying that it's not without prejudice to my clients in any, in any future applications for business license? And also based on their, based on the fact that the, the original license was to run a sweepstakes, which has now been deemed illegal under the new law issued by the California Supreme Court and not based on their running of the games of skill?
Staff supports that. I wouldn't have an issue with that.
Okay, if we could put that on the record and have that be the finding in the ruling, we would be agreeable to that.
Would that be proposed in the motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
How do you define with prejudice if a, a, a business owner has a track record? Because I think it's standard procedure by people, history or track record. I'm willing to assess a current behavior or look at something anew, but I just don't find that I could ignore totally a track record or an incident, or an incident previous or in violation. If there is a, some sort of redeemable effort. Let's say, for example, if someone was placed on probation for 90 days or 180 days and there was no problem. I think there's a, there's a need for, for track records, I value that, so. That doesn't mean that Peterson cannot change their behavior or a mistake was made.
If I, if I might comment with regard to what she stated, they did do their homework. They did come in, they even sat through another hearing for a different Internet Cafe, listened to the conditions of approval, watched what was going on, were constantly in touch with staff as they were processing and coming through the conditional use permit and the business license process to make sure that they were legal. At the time, like I said, it was a very cloudy issue and they were. So that's why staff support, they, they have been very good to work with. They, like I said, they, they were doing this because they thought it was legal. They thought it was a good business choice to make. It turned out not, but it wasn't, they, like I said, they did their homework and staff has no issues with, with saying we shouldn't prejudice them.
I understand. Yeah, and in reading through your response in here, I kind of picked up on what you were trying to convey.
Yes, it's very wordy.
So I do understand that, yeah. Alright, any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? And I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the Commission.
You guys want me to take a crack at it?
Please do.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motion to, um, adopt Resolution P-15-027, thereby revoking conditional use permit AMD 13-00006 based upon the violations of the Victorville Municipal Code and California Business and Professionals Code and adopt Resolution P-15-028, denying the appeal and thereby revoking the business license BSL 13-00212 based upon violations of the Victorville Municipal Code and the California Business and Professional Code. And while taking the, both the revocations into consideration, though should be considered without prejudice. Where in, whereas the, the original use was a sweepstakes and the next intent and possible future intent may be just games of skill. And I would like to say that the "without prejudice" shall mean that any future dealings with the city, that the, the applicant shall not be prejudiced against because of this past business license.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a, a motion by Vice Chair Kerth, a second by Commissioner Dew, to revoke the conditional use, minor conditional use permit, deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the zoning administrator to revoke the business license without prejudice to the clients for future application. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two.
Thank you, Chairman Wilson. Item Number Two is Case PLN 15-00013. It is a conditional use permit to allow for the continued operation of a filled dirt, base material disposal and reclamation site as well as the storage that includes refining, screening of dirt and base material and a site plan to allow for a contractor's storage yard. This is located on the south side of D Street, approximately 600 feet southeast of Eric's Presway. Staff became aware of the operations through code enforcement and code enforcement made planning staff aware that there is no entitlements on the site. So, the applicant was required to rectify these issues by applying to the Planning Commission to make the uses legal. The underlying zoning is an M2 heavy industrial district, which does allow these type of uses with a conditional use permit. Staff considers the operations to be transitional where minimal improvements to the site would be needed with a thought process that in future decades, that the site would develop and that the city would obtain their street improvements. Currently, there is soil screening operations taking place on the north end of the site. And on the south end of the site, there's stockpiling of rock, sand, concrete and asphalt material. The conditions that are proposed today would provide structure to the hours of operation, noise limitations as far as the scope, and also the scope of where product can be stored and what type of product would be stored as well. There is an add-on to your agenda today and it's a proposal to revise Site Plan Condition Number Seven. This would change the condition to remove the requirement for a ride iron fence along D Street and replace it with just a requirement to gate the entries. So that is for your consideration. And with that, staff supports the proposal and we're here if you have any questions.
Any questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section for item number two. If anyone wishes to speak to item number two, would you please come forward? Alright, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment for item number two.
Ah, yes, I have a comment here. I, I was out there a couple of times today, up on the hill, back and forth. And it seems to me that you're recommending that existing small... And it seems to me that you're recommending that existing small block wall be demolished. But to me, that would be a deterrent for people to drive over the land, to drive a car inside that property. And as far as gates, you know, it, what good would be a gate be when you got thirty-five acres? They can drive in any place. So, I would recommend to eliminate item number seven in Tarlov. It's been operated there for twenty-five or thirty years. I understand longer than that. And, uh, nothing is being used except a quarter of a mile away. So, I see no reason to have any type of a fence or tear the block wall down or anything. It seems just ridiculous for us to do that.
I have a question. Were they in, were they in support of going ahead and putting in an access gate? Or was there a concern?
I believe so. I think the applicant's here if they want to speak.
Go ahead and reopen public comment.
Hi, I'm Joe Muller, I'm Jay Muller Associates, and this is the owner, Don Cooley. We had earlier gotten in touch with the staff planner. Yeah, we, we'd earlier gotten in touch with staff planner about the wrought iron fence component and whatnot and we'd, we'd basically said, we'd before, you know, maybe control the access with the, you know, with a gate and whatnot and have it open during business hours and whatnot. And then, so that's where the memorandum came. And since then, what Mr., like what Mr. Huber said, as far as that, that existing two-foot-high, uh, block wall, it's along the front of it. I don't know if you have any pictures or whatnot to put up there, but it's just, it's been there for, when the trailer, trailer court was there. It's been there for fifty years, but what it does is it does detour the people that are going up and down the road from gaining access to the property. My client doesn't have any problem taking it down, but it, but on, on the other side, it does serve a purpose as it sits. So, uh, that would be, that would be all I'd have to say.
Any questions?
As far as any kind of gates on those driveways, is that of benefit to you as property owner or, or not? Is that just a demand from the city that you'd rather not? Is there any purpose for it or, or?
What do you think, as far as putting those gates up? Is it as a, is it, is it just like, would just be a condition of approval from the city? Or would you, it be something that you'd think that would benefit you as a, as a?
It hasn't benefited us, us yet.
You've got something up in place right now and it's doing what it's supposed to do? Okay. Thank you.
Would the removal of that fence, would that do anything to the gas line that is near it? Commissioner Huber said that there is a gas line near the block wall.
Gas line running perpendicular to D Street. It doesn't come, the main gas line does not come close there. Gas company and I are, we talk all the time and watch that no one digs in that area. I'd be happy to show you the gas line and how we've protected it. The gas company is very happy with it.
Yeah, I think we had a picture that showed that you've got steel pipe perimetering the gas line. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, and reclose public comment.
Chairman Wilson?
Yes.
Oh, I moved to adopt the attached mitigation nega- declaration for the project and adopt Resolution Number P dash fifteen dash zero three, run approving the conditions, use permit portion, case number PLN fifteen dash zero 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 one three, and eliminating condition number seven. Adopt Resolution Number P dash fifteen dash zero three-two, approving the site plan portion of case number PLN fifteen dash zero 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 one three. And, and maybe the applicant could take the weeds in front of that block wall and make it look nice. You've got two nice pillars and block wall on each side. Maybe you could take one of your graders and clean that up, make it look nice.
I'll second that if you're through with the motion.
Second, I'm through with the motion.
All right, we have a first motion, a motion by Commissioner Huber to approve this project with removal of condition number seven. We have a second by Commissioner Porter. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That project has been approved, the neg deck and the removal of condition number seven from the conditions of approval.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three.
Item number three is a request for continuance. The applicant's requesting it continues to the October fourteenth hearing.
I'll go ahead and open public comment for item number three. If anyone wishes to speak to that item. And then I'll go ahead and close public comment. And we need a proposal to, uh,
To be ready to, just make a motion to continue?
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, uh, postpone this item to October fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting.
Second.
We have a first by Chair Wilson to continue this to the October fourteenth regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Seconded by Commissioner Huber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that item will be continued to October fourteenth.
And Agenda Item Number Four.
Thank you Chairman Wilson. Item number four is case PLN fifteen dash zero 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 twenty-one. It is, is a site plan to allow for a three thousand fifty square foot retail bakery and drive-through with an environmental exemption. This is located on the southeast corner of Roy Rogers Drive and Civic Drive, specifically between Panda Express Restaurant and In-N-Out Restaurant. The applicant's requesting this proposal. It's a simple site plan approval. There's no conditional use permit requirement for the drive-through since it's outside of a hundred feet from our residence. The proposal meets all municipal code requirements. Staff recommends approval as conditioned.
All right. All right, I'll go ahead and open up public comment for Agenda Item Number Four. If there's anyone here who should speak to the item? I appreciate that.
Good evening. Mike McFarland with Ten Associates for the applicant here. Just wanted to thank Scott for his attention to detail on this, getting this approved and push our, help the process as quickly as possible. There's no objections to any of the conditions of approval. And the architect is also here in case you had any questions on the building materials or anything on the elevations.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item or any questions? All right, I'll go ahead and close, close public comment and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to make a motion if there's no more questions. Yeah, I move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution P fifteen dash zero three-seven, approving case number PLN fifteen zero 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 two one, and find the project categorically, categorically exempt under SEQA.
I'll then second that.
Second. I'm sorry, you second it?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Porter, a second by Chair Wilson. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? While there not being any opposition, that project has been approved.
Thank you. And Agenda Item Number Five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number five is PLN fifteen dash twenty-two. It is a request to allow for a home-based massage business from an accessory structure on a residential property located at one-two-three-nine-zero Tripletree Terrace. The request, as we mentioned, is accessory structure is in the rear yard and it used to be kind of like a hobby shop or a workshop. And she intends to convert one of the rooms to be able to do massage there. We have conditioned the project for your approval, but we were waiting for hearing, if there was any public outcry. We did hear, have one letter recommending that the permit be denied. And because the, well, I'll just leave it, this stated in your packets. You have that in your additional packets tonight. And we also provided you a map of where the, the comment comes from, where the, that person would be living. With that, home occupations are typically approved by staff as long as they don't have customers coming to the site or they don't have signage and things like that. And when they have, when they want to do one of those things, then it requires the Planning Commission approval. It's a different review process. That's why this is before you, tonight, to allow clients to come to the home. So, with that, staff will... Go ahead.
I was just, um, it seems to me that the original concept of a home occupation permit was, was not to have a commercial enterprise. It was for taking in typing, for, um, maybe doing an occasional hairdo or, or doing something to supplement your income. But it wasn't ever meant to be a full-time, uh, process that would compete with our, our, our commercial. And it seems to me that this is almost a full-time
Yeah, I don't know the, I believe the applicant is here and can tell you how much, yeah, I don't know whether it's a full-time or a part-time operation or not, but.
I'll wait for his testimony.
All right, sure.
And with that, I'll go ahead and open up public comment for Agenda Item Number Five. Yes, please, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time tonight. My name's Steve Richard, architect and representative for the applicant. My address, one-six-zero-four-eight Tuscola Road, number six in Apple Valley. And I'm here tonight to answer any questions you might have.
Well, you heard my comment. Do, do you, is, is this going to be a full-time thing for her?
This is an older couple who are looking to kind of consolidate the world a bit. She has a, a practice in Apple Valley. They own a couple of homes, one in Victorville, one in Apple Valley. She's a caretaker of her husband. It's an older couple. And she intends to simplify her world by occupying the detached garage for the home business. She has a limited clientele. She expects to have two to three appointments a day at max. Sometimes that might be one a day. It will always be by appointment and they will, according to her, it will never be stacked as far as patients waiting, or clients waiting. Regarding the gentleman's, uh, comment, the neighbors' issues with this thing, this is a friend of the family. I was referred to her by my wife, who's one of her clients. So, there may be bigger problems than I know of based on other guy's complaint. That being said, this is a pretty solid family and she's very earnest about what she wants to do. It's, the setting is in the back of the property, so there won't be any, um, visual or any aesthetic problems with parking or anything on the neighborhood. And, um, from what we can tell from the entitlements that are available for home occupation permits, it looks like it's an entitlement that's possible based on your, your guys' review and discretion.
Any additional questions?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the comments of, um, Commissioner Porter. My, uh, my sense is that, um, we have a number of, um, unoccupied properties for small businesses within the city of Victorville. I, I'm not convinced that this does not impose, opposes a safety threat as relates to neighbors, maybe possibly schoolchildren. A number of things can happen or, and as you already know, I believe a massage parlor's was something that was placed on our list of problematic businesses, if I'm not mistaken. So, with that said, um, with those businesses being in a, an office, I find it hard to, uh, accept the fact that this would be something placed in a home. It may be a convenience to a deserving couple, but nevertheless, it could pose as some sort of threat to the community. It's my sense that people, it's not that they don't feel safe. That's why we have law enforcement, law enforcement, but I do get the greatest sense that people or individuals do not feel safe enough. So, um...
Just for, excuse me, just for a reference. She has a ten-year professional therapy over at the Apple Valley Inn. She's been there and is well-respected in the community. So, while I appreciate the concerns about what we have to look about for nefarious or negative things going on, I want you to be assured that this is not one of them.
I would ask you this question. Is the person a physical therapist?
She's a massage therapist.
He's not a chiropractor?
No, no sir.
I have a medical background, um, from the United States Air Force and, um, if that was the case from an occupational standpoint, occupational therapy, I just find that, this is my view regarding safety. And that's a, a challenge for the city of Victorville as well as other municipalities. And I just can't ignore that factor.
I appreciate that. I think the other thing that happens, um, in today's age is folks are aging and we're living in a, in a different economic time. Folks are looking to kind of consolidate their worlds in this way and it's a byproduct of that. I can assure you that these folks are top drawer.
Appreciate your testimony today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're welcome.
Any additional questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I'll go ahead and close public comment.
I have a, I guess, a major problem. You know, we approved, uh, a lady to have piano lessons. There's a heck of a lot of difference between a massage place and a piano lesson place. We're, we're trying to, I, I agree with him. Mr. Dew, Drew, we, we're trying to clean up the city. If we allow these people that are probably great people and do a great job, but where do we draw the line for the next massage parlor or place wants to come in? How are we gonna stop that? So, I am definitely opposed of us allowing this to happen. Where, where are you gonna stop, draw the line?
Little, you know, I understand what you guys are saying. A little bit different for me though, because I kind of look at it as, um, you know, Commissioner Dew, you made a good point. You know, hey, shouldn't this business, if this is a real business, shouldn't be out on the street and shopping center business, what have you? But you know, with my experience, I know there's a, a world of difference between going out, dropping a hundred thousand dollars, even on a very small lease, for your signage, your permits, your, your employees, your insurances and all that stuff. And then you've got somebody like this lady, which my mom did back in Wisconsin. She had her massage therapy license. She didn't really feel safe going into other people's homes. She wasn't gonna start up a big, major shopping center massage place. She was becoming unretired and she enjoyed it and she had the mobile stuff. She was gonna go to other people's houses, didn't feel safe doing that. So, had friends, family, neighbors, past customers, very limited basis, come to the house in a quiet room and get their massage. This is a big difference to me in this situation as going out, hey, you should be in a shopping center. You know, piano lessons, hey, the piano makes noise. At least this is a quiet use and it's in a structure sitting in the back of their yard. I see where they're going with this. Um, I don't really have any, any problem with it. Um, as long as the conditions say, you won't know what's there. Somebody might park a car in the driveway and go in there, but a friend might do that as well. The only question I had, Chris, if this, if the conditions did happen to be approved, is it typical that we put hours of operation on the conditions?
It can be, yeah, on different types of uses, sure.
You know, I'm feeling, I, I personally feel pretty confident with, with this use and what, and minimal impacts on the neighborhood. But I, I would think it maybe would be better to be a little bit, a little bit tighter. So, if anybody ever asked, hey, are they, are they giving massages at two in the morning? No, they have, you know, reasonable hours. I would, I would think that might be.
They, uh, in their application, they're requesting or stating Monday through Friday, nine AM to four PM, closed They, in their application, they're requesting or stating Monday through Friday, nine AM to four PM, closed holidays. I read that. If you want to restrict more than that, then that's up to you.
Is the, in this case, is the application part of the conditions or is it, are the conditions standalone?
The conditions standalone unless you modify them.
Yeah, so without, without the condition specifically saying it, just because he wrote, Mr. Richards wrote in a letter, doesn't mean they're limited to those hours.
Correct.
That's just projected.
And I feel, I feel, I understand what Commissioner Do and Commissioner Huber are saying also in regards to this, but I can only speak from my past experience of even where I go to get massage. Currently, it's in a single room in a, a mixed-use building, but it's, again, one person in there at a time, no, nothing odd going on. And there would be, in my opinion, no difference than going to what they're proposing here. It's a very similar setup. With that, also going with what Commissioner Kirk said, understanding that, and also from the applicant's representative of trying to downsize a business that's been well-established in Apple Valley for, you know, ten-plus years. I, I, I get a full chain of both sides, so I do like your proposal of adding into the conditions, making sure that we have it stipulated about the Monday through Friday, nine to four, and closed on holidays, so that there is no question on it in the future. That's what I have to say in regards to this.
In this rare case here, it sounds like maybe a few of us are kind of way to the left and a couple might be way to the right. I don't, I don't want to jump in with a motion right away and get it denied. Is there, is there, is there any more discussion, medium on this or is it gonna end up being agree to disagree?
The same thing is, is where do you draw the line of when you say no? The next person a month or now comes in and wants a, the same type of thing, how are you gonna deny it? And are we trying to clean up the city? Doesn't there different businesses that we're trying to control in the city of Victorville?
If it was just like this, I wouldn't look to deny it, but if it was a home arc which is suited for a home, but it had any of the attributes of, hey, we're gonna have more than one person coming here, we, we might have signage, there might be noise, there might be smell, there might be cooking, there might be, you know, that's not, if, my idea for a home arc is you better not know it's there.
Well, but don't you think people will know this is happening? I'll guarantee you. And you'll have more people coming to City Hall wanting permits for this, so...
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
You know, when I say that there's a safety concern, I can't see a part-time police officer or law enforcement being in the home. I can't see video cameras to have good descriptions of identification of individuals. We've moved into a different era today where safety is something that we have to grasp and get a hold of. It's happening every day around in America, so. I don't see how we can take a blind eye to safety, even for the sa- safety of the individual who is providing the service. What is to say some perpetrator will enter the home and harm them? I do not want that on my conscience. I think this is something that can be prevented. I, I feel for the, the people who want to establish their business, but nevertheless, safety is first and foremost as relates to children, as relates to families, as relates to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion.
I will move the denial of the adoption of Resolution P fifteen oh three-eight.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Porter to deny this application, a second motion by Commissioner Huber. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of denying this?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that with the majority vote, this application has been denied. The applicant has ten days to appeal this decision of the planning commission to the city council.
And for the record, that was based on safety of the neighbors, clientele and the owners, as well as setting precedence for future massage establishments?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Thank you.
All right. Move on to agenda item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number six is DV fifteen dash seven. It is a request by the city of Victorville Building Department inside the Development Department. It is to meet state law requirements for solar, rooftop solar for residential systems and make sure that the city of Victorville expedites the permitting of them. We support approval.
And I'll go ahead and open up public comment in regards to agenda item number six. And seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close agenda item number six, move back to the commission. Any questions? Then I'll go ahead and make a recommendation that the city council find that the code amendment exempt pursuant to section one-five-zero-six-one B, subsection B, subsection three of SEQA and adopt Resolution P dash fifteen dash zero-three-nine recommending city council approval of case number DV fifteen dash zero-zero-zero-seven.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Wilson, second by Commissioner Huber, to approve this, to recommend approval to the city council of this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that will be recommended to the city council.
All right. In compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the planning commission to make available time for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. And seeing no one, we'll move on to agenda item number seven.
Thank you, Chairman Wilson. Item number seven is a proposal that would regulate existing off-sale alcohol and tobacco retailers. Over the past twelve months, the planning commission and city council have moved to adopt regulations on off-sale establishments for alcohol and tobacco, strengthening the restrictions that the municipal code currently had. Those would affect existing businesses. I'm sorry, those would affect future businesses that haven't established yet. There are tools available that the city hasn't entertained yet that would regulate existing establishments that were adopted without any conditions of approval, that, some of which are nuisance to the community that would sell, recently we've had tobacco stores that would sell spice, sell drug paraphernalia. We've also had issues with selling alcohol to minors, signage issues, loitering. The list goes on and on, but there's tools that are available to the city. It is a more complex ordinance if the city would move forward with it since it would establish a fee on the establishments for the enforcement and the routine inspections of these facilities. In the workshop, the staff presented to you a map that the sheriff's department has provided that shows a correlation between nuisance crimes and the location of off-sale alcohol retailers. And with that, the sheriff's department is willing to support this proposal and move forward with workshops on, on this if the city so chooses. There's currently eighty-three alcohol off-sale establishments and ninety tobacco retailers in the city. So there is a significant number that this would affect, so it would take some, some time to walk through this process with them. And we just want to get the facts out there for you if you're wanting to pursue it.
Appreciate that. This is, is this an item we have to open up for public comment?
That's up to you. It's not a public hearing, but if there were anyone here who wanted to speak.
Exactly. Just want to make sure I don't break a formality.
You know, if you would have a fee for this, if you would have a fee of five hundred dollars and you had ninety retailers out there, you'd only be making forty-five thousand dollars a year, wouldn't even pay a person to oversee this. I hate to see existing enforcement people, again, being in business, we're taxed to death.
I'm with you, Terry, Larry. One more, one more tax and it's, it looks to me just like it's like the residential one, right?
I agree, we need something done here, but talking about fees for somebody. And, and I look at some of the other cities that have these enormous fifteen hundred dollars. I don't know if that's per year or what it is, but yeah, it has to be per year. Fifteen hundred, sixteen, five thousand. It's not feasible. So I, I, I think we need to see what could be done, certain performance standards that could be done that wouldn't cost us an arm and a leg. That could be done, I don't know if there's, maybe you could, I don't know, have a person drive by these areas and see if they're cleaning up, because I know some of them are pretty cluttered.
This is good, good discussion. And where you're headed would be, you start with a lower fee, a much lower fee, and if they're a good property owner, then they keep that low fee or something. And then if they get fines or they get caught selling alcohol to underage, they get a high fee or we start revocation. That's, that's kind of what I think Scott's saying is working through the, how an ordinance would work and how we would want it to work for our city are what we would need to discuss.
I think it needs to be talked about. I think the city council and the planning commission should somehow get together and talk about this instead of us talking about it and then they come back and say, well, I don't like that and whatever, but I think it should be discussed.
I believe doing it in a joint workshop would be the best.
Tobacco was part of our problem, the overall picture.
Absolutely. I, I agree with, I agree with Larry and, and this is, this is part of that presentation that we had the gentleman here a while back, right?
Yes.
And I had, personally, I had a little bit of a hard time kind of getting a grasp on what, what that was. You know, I'm all for if there's other tools and mechanisms. I'm not for throwing another tax on businesses to help police. But if that's what it takes to get the police bodies out there, you know, for, for me, I, I see it's just, it's mostly the larger, it's any place that has a larger propensity of customers or bodies, whether it's liquor or ninety-nine cent or whatever. That's where the panhandling, that's where the, a lot of the problems are. I just wish there was a way that our existing police and code enforcement could do that. If they can't, then the alternative is to then charge certain businesses. So maybe we have enough enforcement, but like you said, probably not. And that's why I brought up the, the residential rental program. That doesn't generate much money. Is that gonna fix problems? Are we really gonna get all those guys out there? I don't know. But we didn't have a joint meeting, I don't think, with the city council on that one either, did we, on the residential rental? In this case, it, I, if, if the planning, I feel if the planning commission said, no, we don't even want to look at this, we don't care, city council might say, what do you mean you don't even want to look at it? I think we should at least look at it and see if it's something worthy.
But I agree with you, Mr. Borcherd, because I think that if we start off with a low fee and those who violated, that, that it, it goes up. You're gonna get a lot of them, you're gonna get their attention. And I think that's really what we want to do is get their attention.
We can't now though with the fines and code enforcement and slap them down.
A lot of this is regulated by Bureau of Alcohol and Tobacco, right? Or the local county?
Both specifics. I mean, the city does have ordinances in place that we could go after, trash in the parking lot, possibly the loitering, depending on what degree, the, you know, but not very well. The, this, and it, the, I think what they've done in the, in the past for a lot of these is to establish a fee, but you can see there's a couple of cities on there, no fee. I mean, if the city of Victorville decides not to feed them, we don't feed them. And we try, maybe they're just providing a structure and an ordinance which gives code enforcement better teeth to go after somebody who's violating or a major violator, we can revoke a business license or something. That's, I think, is important. We have a lot of, like Scott said, we have a lot of alcohol and tobacco establishments in the city and we need to do something.
If you're downtown a lot, you can see the police are having problems at liquor stores. And all the things that we got on, on agenda for people to, where the crime is, you can see that if you're a resident of downtown, which I am. Every day, I, I saw today parked in front of a liquor store, having problems, money laundering places. You see the, the police there. Pawn shops. Yesterday, there was a police in front of a pawn shop. All taken time under their job.
Maybe we could establish a city fine for those who violate that. I mean, and so you already know which ones to look out for and the, the police department is giving you a report on it. So, you know, you know, once we decided that we're going to put in our ordinance, then maybe a hefty fine for every violation. Then it pays for somebody to go out there.
Well, and it falls right in line with Commissioner Do's prior comments of public health and safety. It falls right in line with all of that. I would say that probably would be a benefit to at least hold a joint workshop with city council, make sure that we are all on the same page in what we're looking to accomplish, so there's not a question of it. And then move forward, because I think it is, it would be a benefit for the entire city to, let's say, get something that at least has some teeth, depending on which mechanism we decide to go with or how we decide to structure it, but making it, you know, overall just to be a benefit for the overall community, general health and safety.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I, I think this is a great discussion that we're having and I think it would be beneficial if we, each person were to come up with maybe two to three, possibly five pros and cons, one way or the other, before we get to the, to give those things to the city council, because I, I think by the time you're on city council or elsewhere, I think unless you're intimately involved, as we are engaged monthly, if not more than that, because it is our responsibility to regulate land use, I would say that we can give them some idea as to what our thinking is based upon the things that we've seen and the things we're experiencing. And we have, one of the things about this commission, I have a wealth of knowledge from the staff and I commend them for that. I'm not going blind, but I will say that somewhat of a speed reader and I really appreciate documentation. But I, I don't ignore it because when someone takes the time out to provide this kind of research, it's very beneficial and I must act in a way that shows that I appreciate it. And I think we're, we have a tough challenge ahead.
Chris, do you think that we could involve the, the liquor store owners in, in, in our workshop? Because that's where we're gonna get our information. That's, we're gonna...
Absolutely. We can notify them all.
We can find out what their problems are and we might find out a lot more than we'd know just by our own research.
Can I modify that? I, I can see them being in the room with us, that may pose a problem. If there was some mechanism which they could submit their suggestions to the problem and make us aware of the problem, I think that's far more beneficial. It's just like these documents that I read on a regular basis. I will read what they have written and take into account to what they've written.
But when we've, when we've had things that involve land use and, and workshops and things like that, we've involved, we've involved the Realtors and the VIA and, and so I, I just think, I know that you...
We can have a workshop and I'll be the one that make the list of what everybody should bring for, for lunch.
I see the difficulties that Mr. Do is trying to point out. I mean, it could end up just being an argument of, of how the city regulates them and overregulation and another fee like, like Mr. Kirk.
It's not my fault, it's my neighbor's fault.
Right. Yeah, I just sell it, they drop it in my parking lot, they drop it two, two lots down. I can't help it that they drink it on the way out the door.
Like teasers.
Yes. Could be, could be problematic.
Yeah, and you showed us a map too today that, that has lots and lots, you know, well over maybe hundred fifty.
A little bit over fifty percent.
And then you got this little strip by Palmdale Road and down Seventh Street. That's the problem area. You got all these other guys. You think all these other guys are gonna come and go, well, what problem? Oh, except now I think you're onto me. You're gonna tax me coming out of the gate for all those problems and, you know, I, I think we, maybe we ought to have a meeting of the minds of the city council and how far we really... the minds with the city council, how far we really want to go with crackdown, basically.
Yeah, because they're the ones who are gonna get the heat. They'll, they'll get the heat, we don't get the heat, really. Ultimately, they get the heat.
Well, I think it would be a benefit to, I think it would be a benefit to recommend to city council that we have a joint workshop to discuss this item and make sure that we're , again, we're all on the same page, we're trying to move forward in the same direction and getting the same, the desired, desired results.
If it's not exactly this, maybe we, we focus a little more on something else and then maybe that time comes to then start evolving workshop.
Right.
Sounds good.
Certain industries.
Thank you.
Do we have to make a motion for that or no, just discussion?
I think with the majority, I think we saw as.
All right.
Our recommendation.
Now is an opportunity provided for the planning commission to present items of interest at this time. Commissioner Do?
I would just like to state that it's a pleasure in, in working with my colleagues and doing work on behalf of the people of the city of Victorville and, and that I think we always put forth our best effort and that's impressive.
Thank you. Commissioner Huber?
I'm coming.
Commissioner Porter? Commissioner Kirk? And I have nothing. We'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our next meeting, which I believe is September ninth. All right.
On this picnic, is there a softball game between the city and somebody else? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Council and the planning commission is a team. The fire department will have the best team because Vance.
Altman was second.